Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call a meeting to order at seven o'clock, please. And I would ask that Cindy read the statement of compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act into the record, please.
This meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act with notice made to Trenton Times, the 100th County Democrat, the listserv, department heads, the city attorney, and city engineer. The meeting agenda provides for all actual items known at the time of publication and is subject to change. This meeting is being streamed live using the Zoom meeting platform and will be recorded.
Thank you. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilwoman Lambert?
Here.
Councilwoman Sanders?
Here.
Councilwoman Segman?
Here.
Council President Taylor?
Mayor Nowitz?
Here.
Please rise from the position of the citizens and then remain standing for no silence for all those people suffering in Florida and Carolinas. Legend of the agents of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Thank you very much, Ken. Glad to have you on here. This meeting will begin with our bills list. Everybody's had a chance to look over the bills. We only have a few that we're going to pay this evening, but I've got any questions that I know. Otherwise, I'll take a motion to approve the bills list. One second? All right. All those in favor? Can you say aye?
Aye.
Are you opposed? All right. Resolution number 170-2022. This is a resolution to authorize the grant application for the shade tree commission. This is a resolution, this is to adopt a resolution number 170-2022, which is authorizing the grant application with the New Jersey Urban and Community Forestry Program, or a grant that was submitted on July 8th. This is to do an inventory of shade trees here in the city. Total value of the grant request for the city is $37,000 and the total project cost is about $46,000, which leaves the city, city share about 22%. This inventory is especially important for us, you know, as we continue to muddle through with all of these problems we have with our shade trees, in particular, the ash trees. It's going to be important for us to apply for more grant money. Having this inventory well will allow us greater access to grants in the future.
Is it the whole city or the entire?
Yes.
So is this to record it on the STL or whatever?
G, GPS?
I'm not sure how the actual inventory. I didn't bring the application with me.
I'm not sure how that's going to work.
I think, remember, there was a program within the STL.
There is, and that is currently being used for shade tree applications. We'll have Lindsay check into it to see. We did previously work with them at the Shade Tree Commission, but they felt there was another application that suited their needs better because it had more mobility, so they may be looking to use that.
Yeah, there's another completely different system that works like GPS, so every tree is entered on GPS. And that's a device you use or rent or buy. I think that's what they provide, so it must be using this by the way. The match for this is coming from where, Mayor?
I suppose it will come from the city somewhere. So yes, 22% our share, but we won't actually start this work until the next year.
Right, and I also, it's my understanding that there could be a portion of this in kind, like volunteer apps.
Yes.
So we're tracking, the person who wrote this grant is Lauren Kovacs, so kudos to her. And so she was sent out a tracking sheet. Everybody will track her time and that should help to offset that.
What's the scope, the area? Is it the entire city? So the hills, the hill people?
Well, it's the city properties. It's not private property.
It's not private property.
It's a shade, it's a shade trees, right?
It's shade trees, so I think it is all of town and I think it is all properties.
Okay.
That's my understanding, but we can always, as we get closer, have Lauren come in and speak to more about the grant.
I don't think any clues, like a tree that go in my backyard.
No, street trees. They're straight on the street, yeah. Shane, you know, anything that the Shade Tree Commission would have jurisdiction of?
Yeah, well, we'll find out more details because I don't know where the hills fall in.
Yeah, I have the completed.
You can turn that.
Yeah, I can send it to the council.
Yeah.
Appreciate your efforts and rights.
Absolutely.
All right. If there are any questions, may I have a motion, please?
Second?
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody else want to say aye? Anybody else want to go?
You want to say aye or nay?
I said, yeah.
Okay, all right. All right, no one opposed, so the question carries. My next resolution is 171-20, I'm sorry, 171-2022. This is a, this would reestablish the Green Team as part of the Sustainable Jersey. And we had this, we had the Green Team at one time, right, Liz?
Yes, we, we, it's ongoing, so we, we always have the Green Team. Is this adding the Resiliency Team to it?
Yes.
So we wanted to add the Resiliency Team to the Green Team because the Resiliency Team is doing a lot of work that would help contribute to our Sustainable Jersey recertification. And we thought that Sustainable Jersey would like to see the work that the Resiliency Team is doing. So we felt like it was important to add them to the Green Team in order to make them part of that process.
What's the difference between the Resilience Team and the Green?
Well, the Resilience Team is now, we'll be on the Green Team. So the Resilience Team is the team that we have. It's Thursday afternoon. It's working on the Resilience Work.
The Green Team, we can think of like an umbrella, almost, specifically to, so that we can assign work that we're doing to the Sustainable Jersey process.
Anything else? May I have a motion, please, on this? For a second? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We've got to pick up the pace, people. Pay attention. All right. Our next item on the agenda is the presentation of Stormwater Utilities. So I began learning about stormwater utilities here in New Jersey back before I was mayor. I think Liz Pierre and I had several conversations about it. The law was passed in 2019 that established municipalities the ability to create a stormwater utility. So far, there haven't been any created here in New Jersey, but it's still, you know, it's only been a couple of years. It's a lot to consider when you're sort of moving forward with these. And we have two people here this evening who are going to give a presentation on stormwater utilities and, you know, potential funding and just, just general information. And I'm very grateful to have them here. I've already met Bree several times over the course of my mayorship and conferences. And here, I think, well, you actually presented here for the environmental mission remotely, was it?
Maybe.
No, maybe not.
Maybe not.
Maybe not. Maybe that was a stormwater conversation.
Presentation at least three times.
Well, we're really glad to have you here. And so we have Brian Callahan and James Thompson. James is with the New Jersey League of Conservation Voters. Glad to have you here. And we're going to turn this over to you as soon as Lindsay and Lieutenant Brown are ready with the tech. So if any, the council, especially people who don't have, don't want to create an actual screen, want to look at this, I sent an email with the presentation to you a few minutes ago. So. Just a minute or two to set up, please.
Anything you left out of local matters that you think are a little bit off?
No, but I could, I don't know, just in cabinets.
Would it be okay if I wondered a little?
You, absolutely. Yeah, we can certainly present from the microphone if you like. Yeah, absolutely.
Can we get that first? Oh, we can't afford it. It's not moving very bad. This is a police reporter laptop now, so this is just fair.
Okay, all right.
I think it's fitting you're here today because it just stopped raining for five days.
I know, right? Sorry to that, we didn't have any rain.
I did not turn the mic on, so.
Yes, if you would, please. Is that over, everybody? Yeah, that sounds good. All right. Thanks, Bree, for hanging in there.
Thank you for hanging in there, Bree. So as Mayor mentioned, my name is Bree Callahan. I'm with New Jersey Future. I work primarily on stormwater utilities and I'm here to talk to you about that. The title of my talk is "To Rest Easy When It Rains." It's really, it's really here to talk about why stormwater utilities make good sense. And I'm here with my colleague, James Thompson, from NJLCB. We'll talk a little bit about further details, so. Right. New Jersey Future is a nonpartisan nonprofit organization. We're based out of Trenton and work throughout the state on land use and infrastructure issues. And the infrastructure issues primarily are around transportation and around water. And that's sort of where I sit squarely in the water section, working on stormwater issues and stormwater utilities. So I'm going to talk a little bit about what the fuss is about stormwater. I saw the front of the building here. I know you guys all get it. I totally understand that, so I'm not going to really go further, you know, more than I need to in there. Then I'm going to talk about current stormwater funding practices, how stormwater is really funded throughout the state of New Jersey, what stormwater utilities are, what it looks like in New Jersey, what other municipalities are doing in New Jersey, and then a little bit about the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection Stormwater Utility feasibility study grant. And that is a mouthful, but what it means is there's money available, no cost assistance, technical assistance to municipalities from the state that would enable you to really take advantage of stormwater utilities as a resource to see whether or not that makes sense for your community. Let's see. Oh, I didn't tell you. Would you mind? Thank you. Yes, would you mind advancing the slides? Perfect. Okay, if you could go to the next slide, that'd be awesome. I'm advancing them on my own computer, but that's not working for you. So to get back to stormwater, EPA defines stormwater as rain or melting snow that flows off of streets, ponds, or other sites. And this is important because a lot of folks don't consider the snow aspect of things. So rainwater, snow, really flowing off streets and picking up all sorts of debris and chemicals and things. And like I said, you guys all know this. Why does stormwater run off the same? Development in New Jersey is increasing and we're having increased in storm frequency and intensity. So you are well aware of this. I'm not telling you anything you don't already know. If you could go to the next slide, thank you. So what's the fuss? Stormwater fouls our waters, it floods our communities, and it hurts our economy. So I mentioned a few seconds ago about the contaminants that come off of stormwater and they end up in your waterways, contributing to all sorts of water quality issues. The other issue that's really forefront in our mind is the flooding. I saw some of the examples of flooding that you folks have had to deal with. Everyone around here pretty much has dealt with all sorts of flooding. This picture is from Camden. So folks all over New Jersey have had to deal with this. And then there are so many repercussions to our economy. There's business interruption, there's increases in insurance costs. There's public safety issues, a lot of reasons to deal with this. The reason I'm talking to you about this is because we're not managing our stormwater properly. And we need, part of that is because we don't have adequate funding to be able to do that. So right now, the current stormwater funding practices that exist in New Jersey is to fund stormwater through your property taxes or through your sewer fees. Next slide, please, thanks. So with property taxes, it's not, and I'll talk about this a little bit further, but it's not very equitable. Property taxes, anybody who's not paying taxes is not actually paying into their stormwater, paying for their stormwater contribution. Same thing with sewer fees. Anyone who doesn't really have a water sewer bill is also not paying for their stormwater management. And this would be, for example, this would be like somebody with a big giant parking lot that doesn't really have very much in terms of water consumption. Next slide, please. So what are your options? You can do nothing, which, as you've seen, you can't really do nothing. The problem exists. It's staring you in the face. You've got to do something. You can increase property taxes, you can increase sewer rates, both of which are obviously not very popular for obvious reasons. And then the other option is to create a stormwater utility. And I'm here to talk about why creating a stormwater utility is a good tool and what the benefits are of creating stormwater utility. Next slide, thank you. So what is a stormwater utility? It's like any other utility you imagine. Your electric, your sewer, your water. The stormwater utility is really a dedicated funding mechanism to pay for your stormwater management costs. The legislation, and I'll talk about this in a minute, from New Jersey, the enabling legislation provides that the stormwater utility cannot transfer the fees to any other, for any other reason. It has to be used for stormwater manager purposes. Next slide, please. Thank you. Okay, so there are, you're probably wondering at this point, is this, you know, is this a new thing? Nope. Is it something that's only on the East Coast? Nope. Is it something that's, you know, urban versus, or is it rural? It's not only urban places. There are over 2,000 stormwater utilities throughout the country. They are not red states, they are not blue states, they are not north, south. Population doesn't make a difference. The smallest stormwater utility is in Florida in a place called Indian Creek and its population is 88 people. The largest is in Los Angeles and they have 3 million people. So it really, you know, it's a wide range. The reason why all of these, the commonality between all of these folks is that they realize they need to manage their stormwater and they don't have adequate funding to be able to do that. Thank you. So to take a step back a little bit, our enabling legislation is called the Clean Stormwater and Flood Reduction Act. It was signed by Governor Murphy in 2019. Since then, we haven't had any stormwater utilities implemented in New Jersey. Part of that is because of COVID. People were obviously otherwise occupied with other things. But New Jersey's law is permissive, meaning it's not a requirement. You can, but you don't have to create a stormwater utility. If you do create a stormwater utility, you have to collect these fees based on the amount of the property, of the amount of stormwater that a property generates. Typically, this is a function of the amount of impervious coverage, rooftops, driveways, walkways, that sort of thing that you have on your property. It's a function of that in relation to how much stormwater your property is creating. If you do collect fees, I mentioned, it has to be based on that rational relationship. And it has to be anything, it can be established by municipalities, counties, groups of municipalities, and sewer agent improvement authorities. There's a lot of flexibility built into the legislation, specifically because we are so, our communities are so diverse in New Jersey. So it really allows for a lot of flexibility in terms of, you know, utilizing the infrastructure, this, you know, the government and the agency that you already have in place. And part of this is so that it can reduce the costs. There's no additional bureaucracy that needs to be created. You set it up based on what your municipality, what makes sense for your municipality. And then, as I mentioned before, the funds that are generated from stormwater utility are dedicated solely to stormwater management. They can't be used for anywhere else in the, in the government. It can only be used for stormwater management. Next slide, please. Okay, so what are the key benefits? Really, the main three key benefits are that it's equitable. It's based on the function of the amount of stormwater that your property creates. Everyone has to pay into the stormwater utility. The only exemption is for actively, active agricultural and horticultural land. So nonprofits, hospitals, educational institutions. Everyone else has to pay, would have to pay into. This also includes your county government and includes the state government. So think of the Department of Transportation, DOT roads, federal, any federal roads. I don't think you have any federal roads. But they would all have to pay for their stormwater contribution. It's dedicated, which means it's separate. You know, you're not going to, like I mentioned before, it's not going to be moved to other places. And then the other thing is that it's stable. You can rely on that income to plan. Yes?
Excuse me, did you say that certain organizations were exempt, like hospitals and nonprofits?
No, they're not exempt.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you. No, no. The only folks that are exempt is the agricultural and horticultural land. And these are properties that are taxed under the Farmland Preservation Act. Okay, next slide, please. So what can a stormwater utility pay for? It can pay for the establishment of the utility itself. It can pay for capital expenditures, so any sort of capital projects you need to look forward to putting together. It can pay for your operations and maintenance. It can pay for, this can include snow removal, it can include catch basin cleaning. It can, it can include all of the things that you're required to comply with under your MS4, your municipal separate storm sewer permit, which there's going to be a revision of as a new permit that's coming out in the new year. And there are a ton of new requirements.
Yeah, we've bumped up to A and we've already been looking at them.
Yes, yeah, a lot of municipalities are looking at a stormwater utility for that reason because all of those, the municipalities are now having to, they have more strict requirements. It also includes public outreach and education. And all of these things really are part of the MS4 permit in some way. So they would all be eligible expenditures under the utility. Okay, next slide, please. Just to give you an example, this is just a slide that I borrowed from folks in Harrisburg, Pennsylvania. They implemented a stormwater utility. Just to give you an idea of the difference in terms of distribution, if you look at those two pie charts, the distribution, the pie chart on the left is the heat distribution based on wastewater. So that's based on water sewer. And the one on the right is based on, with a stormwater utility. And you can see that the residential customers paid a much higher burden under the sewer fees versus what they pay with a stormwater utility. So really, it is the most equitable way to go. It's, you know, you can see the proportion of residential customers is 48% without the stormwater utility and it's 23% with.
Go ahead, sorry. So does this slide mean or imply, I'm sorry, is it okay to keep this?
Absolutely.
Okay, thanks. Because I might not remember my question.
Okay.
So does this slide imply that a stormwater utility subsumes or replaces a sewer utility?
No.
It's in addition.
Yeah, it's separate. So in some places throughout the country, they've done this where they've reduced their sewer fees and then implemented a stormwater utility fee. In some places, they've actually reduced their property taxes because they've taken that piece out of their property tax budget and they've put it into the super utilities. And the reason that is, is because of all the benefits of it being dedicated, not being able to move somewhere else. And so this is, yeah, this is not subsumed, it's separate.
So. Is the money just being, are the charges just being reallocated from one component to another?
Yes, so, okay, that's what, and I'll explain this in a little bit, but you'll have to, so as part of the feasibility study that we'll talk about in a second, engineering and financial consultants help to distinguish and break out what those costs are. Residents and, you know, business owners and everybody will not be charged twice. So whatever you're paying for, it's only the stormwater management stuff. So that would have to be, you know, separated out. Good question.
Yeah, the, the breakdown of Harrisburg is Harrisburg, so.
Right, it's different.
So that's how it works in Harrisburg, so I don't know. As you said, without the feasibility study, how much that'll affect.
Absolutely, yeah. And this is really just to show the breakdown in the percentages of residential versus non-residential. Because right now, the residential customers are bearing the brunt of the stormwater management because it's based on property taxes or sewer fees instead of based on the amount of stormwater you're actually creating. That's, that was the point. Does that make sense?
As long as we're asking questions, the, I mean, authorities normally have employees that are separate apart from the municipality. You know, for a small municipality, that's a challenge, I think, to have like staff, you know, if you're building a staff for utilities authority. Are they permitted to be part of, but separate the funding for, like, say, we have a municipal utilities authority here for sewer. I mean, they have a staff, they have a board. Are there abilities for joint utilities with stormwater?
Absolutely. I'm so glad you asked that. So they're, think of it as like brick and mortar versus a line item on the bill. For stormwater utilities, it does, you don't have to have so dedicated staff. It doesn't have to be a new building. It doesn't have to be a new administration. It can be the same folks who are doing it right now, the way that you're managing it right now, whether it's in your DEW department or wherever else. It's just that you will have a dedicated pot of money to pay those folks. Okay, next slide, please. Okay, so one of the important things about the legislation is that it requires stormwater credits. And this is really important because the fee is based on a function of how much you are contributing to the stormwater, you know, to stormwater. And if you reduce the stormwater that you're actually contributing to the system, you get a credit. So if you put a rain guard in it or you upgrade your system, it doesn't have to be green infrastructure, it can be gray infrastructure. So if you replace certain pipes or whatever you do that manages the stormwater on your property, you'll receive a credit. And each municipality develops their own stormwater credit system. So you develop it how it makes sense for you. It may be completely different than how it works for somebody else. But credits are required. This really helps to incentivize folks to manage stormwaters so you have less to do, which is great because the overall point of this whole legislation is to make sure that we're decreasing the amount of stormwater and not necessarily just charging people more money. There's DEP guidance that provides more information about the credits and, you know, specific information about the credits. This is also something that consultants would address. Next slide. Okay, so steps to establishing a stormwater utility. The first is to really start talking about the concept, and this is kind of what you're doing right now. Then it goes into establishing a core team of internal experts, engaging the mayor, who's already engaged, authorizing a feasibility study, and this is one of the main things. Authorizing a feasibility study is important because you really need to understand what your current level of service is and then what sort of level of service you need to get to. Really, in many cases, it's what are we not doing that we need to be able to do to be able to comply with our permits? What are, what things are breaking that we need to upgrade? What's coming down the pipe, like additional permit requirements, that sort of thing? So what, how much money do we actually need? And this is what the consultants help you do, is figure that. And this is what the consultants help you do, is figure that out. From there, from the, either feasibility study, there's continuing, ongoing stakeholder and outreach activities. You wanna talk to the community about, I mean, your community understands about stormwater. Or maybe they don't, I'm just supposing, but, um, you wanna make sure that folks understand what the purpose is and not surprise them and say, hey, um, this is what we're doing. So ongoing stakeholder and outreach activities are really important. And at that point, you kind of decide whether or not this makes sense for your community or whether it doesn't make sense. From there, there's an implementation phase and then a final launch. So you wanna give folks, you know, plenty of time to ask questions and understand what this is coming from, what it'll pay for, that sort of thing. Okay, next slide please. These are the types of questions, um, that we wanna answer. What are the problems that are facing your community? What are your community's goals? Do you need a different structure, different resources, and what your cost of inaction is? Um, because that's something that's important to consider. Okay, I'm almost done. So, um, next slide please. Currently in New Jersey, we have nine municipalities who are working through different stages of their feasibility studies. A couple of them have gotten to almost the end of their feasibility study, but because of COVID, had to go back and redo all of their numbers because things had changed. And the reason why folks are taking a look at this is strictly because of flooding issues, summer infrastructure needs, and water quality concerns. So these are the main things, the main reasons why folks are trying to figure this out. Okay, so next slide please. The last thing that I wanna mention before I turn this over to, um, James is this NJDEP grant opportunity. And this is really important. We've been advocating this for, for a while. And DEP has this, um, no-cost stormwater utility feasibility study technical assistance grants. The deadline is November first for their application. It's a very simple letter application. I've been helping municipalities write the letter, put things together. But it's a really great opportunity to get these feasibility studies done. In addition, if you do decide to do a feasibility study, or do, do decide to implement a stormwater utility, there's, um, some other benefits that you would get from working with DEP. Um, and the folks that they have, um, who are working with them are outside consultants who are national experts, which is fantastic. Some of them are on our program of consultant, um, list who have agreed to sit and talk with folks. But they're a really great resource and these feasibility studies can cost up to like a hundred thousand dollars. So it would be a really great benefit to be able to, to get advantage of that from the state. So we also have a bunch of other, um, resources and, um, some of them are the Stormwater Utility Resource Center, which is a website that New Jersey Future has. It talks through, um, and you can, you skip to the next slide. It has details about how you wanna set up your stormwater utility outreach and engagement. And speaking of outreach and engagement, let's skip to the next slide and the next slide. I, James, my colleague James is gonna talk about some of the, um, resources that, um, L C B has to provide as well.
Well, James, just setting up, I would just note that we are applying for the technical assistance grant. We have the, the application ninety-five percent done and apply set it out the next few days. So, uh, thanks to, uh, the base help that in particular Kate Millsaps, uh, and Bree, I got started on that. Resilience team is working to just kind of button it up and we should get that out, uh, the next two days.
Before you ready to start. How does, uh, how does this project just affect cities that are subject to flooding from the river?
So some of the costs that are allocated and paid for are the same costs that you would be paying for with flooding from the river. So if it's anything, the definition in the legislation says it's anything related to stormwater management. So if there's flooding from the river and you're dealing with, um, detention or whoever, I don't know your specific, you know, engineering situation, but some of those costs can be, um, paid for through the utility.
And the utility then can come up with a stormwater management plan and get a price, right? Just like we do here. And, uh, they can, uh, adjust their fees accordingly.
They can also bond, right? So that's one of the key features is that we could go bond for large infrastructure projects and fund them, you know, pay for them over ten or twenty or thirty years. It's one of the key benefits, right? So the way I see it, you know, for example, I'll just use the culvert that collapsed tonight, right? So we had to build that exactly as it was built before. Uh, that's the requirement from Pima. And, uh, you know, is that the right size culvert for the increased amount of rainfall and stormwater? You know, we had to do it that way. We would have liked to have built a larger culvert alongside of it, but we weren't able to do that. So, you know, if we had a stormwater utility, we could, if that was something that we felt was appropriate, we could just go ahead and bond for it and build it next year. So, you know, it allows you a funding mechanism, not just in terms of man, management, maintenance from day to day and month to month and year to year, but it also gives you the ability to, to take on bigger infrastructure projects that you may feel are critical to, uh, stormwater management.
It can provide matches for grants that are available as well, um, just being able to have that dedicated funding stream. A lot of times there's, you know, matches that are required. And then the other thing too is that, um, I should have mentioned this earlier. If the operations and maintenance for stormwater utility would be outside of the two percent cap. So you're nodding your head, I understand. Um, so all of those costs, if you're up against the two percent cap, it would give you some wiggle room in terms of how much money is available.
Well, it's also, I, um, suppose it's also up to the board to decide what's needed and what's not. And how much it's gonna cost and the equity, the equity part of it would be determined by, by going through the study.
Yeah, and that's really the benefit of this and really why I'm here today and why James is here is to talk through. Because this study is just such a great opportunity for you just to be able to figure out whether it makes sense or not. And it's not gonna cost, you know, the city anything, which is great and unusual.
And then we'll learn, uh, where most of this water is coming from, but who's producing what? Because from our last experience with Ida, it comes from the hills, does come from the flat part. So, and it could even come from our neighbor, like West Ham.
Yeah.
So this, this will be up to consideration.
Yeah.
And, uh, okay.
So, um, upon obtaining this technical, uh, feasibility technical assistance grant, are we obligated to act or, uh, commit to any action within a certain period of time? I mean, is this something we could literally say, thank you very much, we're not gonna do anything?
Yes. Yeah, you can say thank you very much. I mean, there's no obligation either way. There are benefits if you do decide to implement, um, for working with the state on this. Um, and really some of the benefits that I've seen lately is that the consultants that they have that are actually providing this no-cost technical assistance are national best experts. So you're, you're getting, you know, the top folks looking at these great sprawls.
Okay, and one more question. So as far as resources to conduct the study, the, the, yeah, the feasibility study, you probably said it, I missed it. Wh- where do the resources come from? Are, I mean, I would imagine some city resources needs to be involved? Or are they just consulting resources through the grant?
Through the grant? It's basically, um, the way I, I've understood that it works, you, you know, you apply to the DEP. They take a look at what your needs are. Um, the only thing you have to do is make sure that you have someone who, at the city, who is, um, going to work with the consultant. And by work with, I mean, be the point of contact. You're not obligated to do any sort of data analysis or anything like that. You have to provide them with, um, like parcel data and things that you would already have. And then they would match you up with the, one of the consultants and then the consultants do all the work for the feasibility study.
Okay.
Do they, my question, do they use the topography in their, in their, uh, uh, mix? Do they look at the topography as, as, or most of our, we have a large percentage of hills in there? And, uh, I'm just wondering how, why they, you, it, other than roof sizes and acreage, do they take into consideration the slope of the property?
I'm not sure, because part of, the consultants would be working with C E P and then you'd have to agree on a scope of work and work through the details of what's gonna be in that, um, you know, in that feasibility study, so I'm not totally sure.
I'd be surprised if they didn't.
I know that they do a lot of G I S analysis and parcel analysis of the amount of previous coverage. Because that's, you know, one of the main reasons why you'd be looking at this. But they have to take into, take the geography into account when they're.
Well, any large development around here does that now? Or is, or is required to do it now?
Yeah, I would imagine that they would, but I really don't know the details of.
Okay.
Yeah.
If I understand fair, this, this does provide for external funding in a way that our current funding mechanism doesn't to the extent that this, like, New York State does. State would be a contributor to the funding of this through this, uh, project.
Right.
School, the L P S, the schools, our churches, our nonprofits, our businesses, every, every, yeah.
Yeah.
Property.
Every stormwater creator.
Correct.
Right.
Basically, everybody.
Except for farmland. If you have any major farmland, that would be the only exception.
Everybody else. With the two agriculture, horticultural.
Yep.
With those exceptions.
Yeah. Makes sense.
I was gonna say, one, uh, one important note about implementation is that the city has the ability to bring this to referendum or to, uh, to, to do it through the council. So, um, which I think is a, something that we would obviously want to consider, how we, how we would want to look forward with this, um, the, um, feasibility study. You know, once we got the, um, feasibility study, so.
Yeah, it, it's an interesting concept. And I would hope that the study, should we get the grant, uh, can, it, it's hard to justify someone living on the corner of, of North Union Street and, uh, and Delavan, right? To someone who lives up on the hill, like what, what is that property downtown on a relatively small piece of property? What's their responsibility for stormwater management since it's stormwater management is basically the storm drains in, in the area?
Yeah, it's all, it's all prated. I mean, there's a formula, right? It's all based on your lot size, roof size, and it's all super technical and highly mathematical, right?
Yeah, and that's why the consultants are really the ones to help you figure that out. And also, there are different rate structures that you can take advantage of, um, based on, you know, how you wanna structure the, the overall piece. And there's no prescription in the legislation that makes you do any one of the above. So if you wanted to ban certain rate, you know, rates, if you wanted a certain amount of square footage, you know, you could make bans too, so you're not, you know, adversely affecting people who, you know, are living in urban areas or not.
How does it relate to, uh, a development, so to speak, existing developments that we have around the city? How does, what do they just develop? Who, who manages, would you work with the homeowners association that set out this, what, could work? And how do they figure out how much each of the town has?
It's all based on the technical G I S analysis that the consultant can help you figure out.
Yeah, I, I assume that, that's, because it's new, it's new, so it's not something I'm asking questions, and maybe things that are already in place that we just don't know about.
Yeah.
James? Yeah, it's good, sure. Thanks. Good evening, my name is James Thompson, um, I'm with the New Jersey League Conservation Voter Education Fund. We are a nonprofit organization, uh, based in, uh, Hamilton, uh, we work statewide.
Can you speak quickly?
Oh, sorry, I don't think your mic.
Your mic's not on.
Okay. My name is James Thompson with the New Jersey League Conservation Voters Education Fund. Uh, we're a nonprofit organization, we're based out of Hamilton, uh, we work statewide. Uh, we focus on, um, making sure that we have, um, policies, that are environmentally friendly, uh, and also make sure, uh, that we maintain, uh, good quality drinking water, open space, parks, um, and clean air. So, next slide please. Um, so I'm kinda gonna go a little bit, somewhat briefly on what, uh, Bree touched on a little bit. But, uh, I kinda wanted to just talk a little bit more about the challenge, um, some of the problems that we're facing. So as you know, like this, municipalities and towns all over the state that are dealing with, uh, flooding and stormwater issues. And that, you know, rainfall itself is changing. We're looking at more frequently, more frequent rains. For example, it rained Friday till Tuesday. I think it also may have rained yesterday, but it's rained for what, four or five days? Um, and because of that, uh, and because of the fact that we also have a higher percentage of the previous surface, uh, here in the state of New Jersey, that rain has somewhere, needs somewhere to go. And what's happening is obviously we're going into our, our systems and we're, it's part of the reason why we're, 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 so. So development continuing to happen around the state, uh, we're gonna see more, uh, more higher frequency of play, um, more than what we've seen in the past. The other factor is that I wanna make sure that, uh, we're, our, our, our quality of drinking water, um, becomes better right now, forty percent. Jersey drinking water, uh, did meet work quality standards, uh, just based off of, uh, twenty nineteen data. I wanna try to help figure out a way to, to turn that around. Uh, and then also the result of flooding as well. Has this algae, um, algae room, which is also on its heads, um, which can be toxic and dangerous to, uh, humans and mammals and other kinds of life as well. It's obviously a problem. Uh, and so we wanna make sure that we, you know, find ways to, to address that stormwater utilities. It's one of the ways that we can also address that as well. Next slide. They couldn't even talk about the problem a little bit, just looking back last year, Ida, we looked at about two, close to two hundred and fifty million dollars in damages, uh, to homes and businesses. We lost thirty folks, you know, around the state because of that, like that storm just kinda popped up on us. I don't know about you, but, um, I know that the storm that was coming up the coast last week, um, concerned for a lot of folks, uh, did a lot of damage, around the state, uh, as well. And so like municipalities, towns are dealing with this challenge or looking for different ways to try to address this. You know, you had mentioned before that there were some challenges that you, that, uh, that, that Landerville had, had dealt with before, um, dealing with storms, uh, flooding. Next, next slide. So, um, just based off of some of the information that we have, uh, we've seen that there's nearly seven hundred, uh, water infrastructure project needs, so there's seventy-seven billion dollars statewide. I think one of the things that, one of the benefits of stormwater utilities that gives, uh, municipalities an option to really, you know, try to address that and find, finding to be able to, to deal with this challenge. Uh, and there's obviously, uh, gaps in capacity as well, whether it's the infrastructure itself, you know, and other things like that. Wanna make sure that we're gonna provide, um, that support that municipalities could do to address this, uh, this challenge. Next slide. So just kinda talk briefly about, uh, the work that we're doing, um, here in New Jersey. So the Flood Defense New Jersey is a coalition of, uh, several different organizations, Jersey Futures is one of the, the partners as well. Uh, we're working with just some of these organizations that are up here. Uh, there are other, other partners as well, San Francisco Business Council, uh, Rutgers University, Common Preservation Alliance, uh, and JAC, um, New Jersey Commons Coalition. There are also other, uh, coalition partners as well. One of the things that we're doing is we're working specifically with, um, municipal, different municipalities around the state to not only talk to, um, public officials and also community stakeholders, businesses, uh, about the opportunities with stormwater utilities. But also to make sure that, um, folks are educated, uh, receiving the right information, the proper information. Make sure that folks aren't misinformed about what, uh, stormwater utilities are as far as like the process itself of applying for a feasibility study. And then actually having good, strong, solid public, uh, dialogue and input and then move it to a place where they're actually voting and then actually, uh, implementing utilities. So, uh, so we wanna make sure that folks are, 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 that everyone in the process, all of the process, all of the stakeholders, um, are educated. If folks have questions, we wanna make sure we're able to provide answers to those questions. Um, and also that make sure that there's a positive, healthy dialogue, uh, around any issue with concerns that, whether there are businesses, uh, that might have concerns or residents that might have concerns, anyone that has concerns, we'll make sure that they're addressed as well. Next slide. whether there are businesses, uh, that might have concerns, or residents that might have concerns, anyone that has concerns, we'll make sure that they're addressed as well. Next slide. Part of, also, a- as an addition to part of what we do within the Flood Effects New Jersey, uh, we also have been able to provide, um, uh, grants to assist municipalities, uh, and the process of actually retaining, um, a consultant that would actually conduct the feasibility study. We've, we have provided municipalities upwards of $30,000, uh, to be able to assist with that as well. We also provide, um, technical assistance through the process as well, uh, and also how to implement it along with, uh, what any type of information you can receive from, uh, the consultant as well. Uh, we also provide educational service, which is also vitally important, and then also community operations support. I know that when we had talked about the steps that we very strongly encouraged that, um, folks are able to do, to be able to implement the utility and actually do the feasibility study, implement the utility itself. You know, this is very important, and so one of the things that we're, we're providing, we're able to help as a coalition, we're able to have, work with, local officials to make sure that we are continuously finding ways to educate, uh, community, uh, stakeholders, uh, within different towns and communities. Uh, so they know, uh, what to expect along the way, um, and how this would benefit their town, and also the value in itself, of the value of having utility itself. Could appear networking as well, um, you know, there, uh, New Jersey Future has, um, uh, resources. Well, there's opportunities to be able to ask questions, um, and be able to get questions answered, um, and then also, we also provide materials and events as well, uh, we've been working with our partners, you know, uh, over the past couple of years to be able to provide, um, educational information, also educational forums, uh, about how we can find different ways to be able to address, um, stormwater, uh, management and deal with that challenge as well. Next slide. Um, so I had mentioned before, we have been able to, uh, provide, uh, municipalities with upwards of $30,000, uh, to be able to assist, uh, and the cost of the, to cover, uh, the cost of feasibility study. And, uh, as long as, uh, dollars of funding is available, uh, those, that, that, that fund is there, uh, for municipalities. That's more work and in the direction of, of, of platform feasibility. Next slide. Uh, any questions?
No, I didn't have a question.
Of the, uh, the grant that you're talking about, is that after this, eh? We had one presentation where we didn't have to pay for the study, and your organization gives grants to do a study, so.
So we've been, we've been providing grants to different municipalities, uh, around the state to be able to, uh, apply. So what they do is like, once the municipality has agreed to do the feasibility study, there's a process that you build during, put on RFP. And what we've been able to do with, um, suburban municipalities around the state, we've been able to provide them, um, with, uh, funding, uh, that will help cover a part of the cost for the feasibility of the study itself, to retain the consultant.
In many cases, this was prior to the DEP grant.
Okay.
So, James, would this be after the DEP, you know, if, if we were not successful with the DEP grant, would this be something that they could take advantage of?
They could take, you could take advantage of it as well, and so, uh, that's so, for example, there are some towns that have also applied for, um, for the DEP stormwater utility, feasibility study dollars as well.
And did you say there are municipalities that are actively pursuing, uh, implementation of these, of the stormwater utility?
Well, right now, no one has been completely, so there are folks that are very close to being done with the feasibility study, but no one is actively pursuing implementation at the moment, because they're not completely done with the feasibility study yet. So, go ahead.
Okay, so, if I understand you correctly, there are several feasibility studies.
No, 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 no. So there's, there's, no, no, there's several municipalities.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to make it, it's clear. There are several municipalities that are currently in the process of conducting the feasibility study.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, and.
There's one feasibility study.
Yeah. The, uh, is it possible to share that list with us about who's going through a feasibility study now, or is it confidential information?
Yeah, so it's a very politically sensitive issue, obviously. There are some municipalities who are not comfortable with us sharing any of this information. Um, I can tell you that Hoboken, they were in the news recently, so I can tell you that Hoboken has been, um, recently looking into stormwater utilities, and I, I can also tell you that Princeton is also looking into stormwater utility, and they're doing a feasibility study right now. Um, so I can tell you both of those, but.
How long does the study take?
It depends. So some folks can get it done within, you know, do it, it's six months, and some folks, um, it, it takes 18 months. It really depends on how many moving parts you have. Um, and it depends on, you know, if you're a CSO community with, um, all sorts of, you know, rate study issues that you need to deal with, it just takes much longer. Um, but I think the average is about nine to 12 months.
And while that's being done, uh, some of the cities changed their ordinances to lower the threshold for when stormwater management kicks in. As far as this 3,000 square feet of, this surface now, and.
Yes.
So, and we're thinking, well, we're in conversations about lowering that.
Lowering it, yeah.
So it would kick in a study, their own, first privately funded study, on what they're doing, even if it's a development.
That might be part of your discussion as you're talking through the stormwater feasibility study stuff. I know for the most part, most municipalities are using the DEP threshold, they're not going lower. There are a few municipalities that have gone above and beyond, and they, you know, lower threshold, but for the most part, I think the largest percentage is folks that are just at the DEP threshold. Those are sort of separate tracks, if you will, like, us, you know, stormwater utility is different than the developer, or even the homeowner saying, okay, I have to do a plan for managing stormwater on my individual property. Frankly, had stormwater utility, there would be incentive for developers to do better stormwater management on their properties, so they could pay less over time. Yes, exactly.
And will ultimately take pressure off the system overall. I think that's the main, one of the most important, uh, uh, opportunity there.
And we're happy to answer any questions. If you think of questions later that you want to answer, uh, our email, you can take, you know, our email addresses are both on that list. Um, I can answer most of the technical stuff, and James and LCV does an excellent job as part of the, um, as part of the Flood Defense Coalition, they have folks who deal with businesses, there's the Sustainable Business Council, and other folks who have area specialties, so they can really help out with working with your business community, the sustainable business, or other, you know, coalition members, um, that have, and LCV has great expertise with working with the communities and doing public outreach.
So, uh, public outreach would be, I mean, when you start, when you commit to the idea of a feasibility study, you wanna start public outreach immediately before, I guess, right? You wanna start, I mean, for me, you know, this is the first step, the introduction, and, uh, you know, I wanna start talking about this publicly, and the feasibility study publicly. Uh, but we wanna make sure that we're, we're engaging those stakeholders very early on, um, so that they know that we're, we're interested in having this conversation. Um, because for some people, it's kind of, for some businesses, or some, uh, property owners, what, what, what have you, it's, the, the stakes are gonna be high, right?
Yeah, well, and the unknown is scary, right?
Right.
And you want people, the people to trust that you're doing the right thing for the overall community, right? So, that's part of it. I mean, LCV is good, it's help, it's help, can help you, you know, build that trust and target folks about, you know, like James mentioned, there's a ton of misinformation out there about all of these things, um, and just getting the right information out there is, yeah.
And, and just the only thing, it's like, as far as like public outreach, um, is that we do have, um, staff members, um, on the LC team that are dedicated to, uh, finding different strategies on how I reach out to different community stakeholders. But also how to continue to keep folks engaged throughout the process, make sure that folks are, are, are aware of what the options are. For people to evaluate this, they, they kinda need to know, like, what the, if we were to throw this to a referendum or so forth, so if, if I'm a property owner, I'm gonna kinda wanna know what's it gonna be in terms of dollars, if it's $75, if it's $5,000.
Right.
If I'm a church who, normally not taxed, and all of a sudden I have a big property with lots of blacktop, you know, what does that mean for me? Um, so will the feasibility study get into an end result to give a view towards what the, the cost impacts?
Yeah, typically it does. Um, there's some other research, and there's a lot of great resources on our Stormwater Utilities Resource Center, the website that I was mentioning about, kinda briefly went through that. But there's a lot of resources where you can kinda get a picture, um, there's a study on there, for example, from Western Kentucky University that details all of the stormwater utilities on the map that I mentioned throughout the entire country, and it tells you what each individual utility fee is, and what makes up that fee, and what their geography is and all that, so you can kinda get a good sense from that. Um, I can tell you typically the average is $5 a month, or, you know, across the country, but you can get a better sense of, you know, those sort of details, that level of specificity, um, with some of the, um, resources that we have.
And I would imagine you could potentially, uh, start with lower fees with the expectation that this is the beginning, and
Absolutely.
while we begin to set up what, you know, for Lambertville may actually not be a huge, uh, structure or support, right? And then you can build, uh, into it as you need, right?
Yeah.
So it's possible to start quite small and build as you go along, exactly, um, which I think would be an important part of any conversation.
Does the feasibility study, um, talk about, when they're done, talk about how much implementing their study would cost?
I think they do, um.
Because that would be a huge driver here.
Right, and then they, they will talk about the, um, like, next steps typically, um, because this is run by DEP, um, and it's their grant, I'm not totally sure how they're handling it. But typically with the consultants that they have in their stable of consultants that are available to work with municipalities, um, I can tell you, I've seen a number of their feasibility studies, and they really go through all of the steps. You know, posts and what implementation would look like, and what the cost would look like, um, going forward. And it would detail the costs, you know, what the rate structure would look like, and, you know, and assets to take a look at. For certain types of property owners, what the cost would be for them with the utility as proposed.
So, the feasibility study would also determine what the, uh, LMU is part of, the LMU way build with.
No, if it, if it is. It would be completely separate, I mean.
Well, one of the statements was, you, one pot may decrease the amount of, uh.
Right, if, if you're, if your sewer system is also your stormwater system.
Yeah, it depends on how you're set up, and have, what the municipality actually wants to do. In many cases, it doesn't lower it. In some cases, it does. It, it all depends on whether you're, you know, what your overall cost
Okay.
needs to be, what your big, what your big pot needs to be.
Right, our system is closed, right? Sewer system is closed, so it's not part of the stormwater system at all. So they'd be separate.
So that analogy doesn't work for us.
I guess not. Okay.
Because you're not a CSO, so, I said you're not a CSO community, so it's different.
So, uh, Councilman Sanders raised the point that certain organizations will be paying for something where they're not used to being taxed.
No tax, no, it's a fee.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's gonna be the first thing that we have to talk about all the time, right?
Well, you know, colloquially, this has been called a rate tax, right?
Yes.
Okay, so, which kind of, like, has anybody, have any of these organizations, um, pushed back against municipalities trying to impose this fee?
That's what it says on this website.
That's the word, that's the word.
Only because, only, you know, people like, you know, people don't like to pay more money.
Right.
And they may, they may say, oh, this is a violation of our, you know, nonprofit status. Um, and then where does that leave the municipality should a, uh, an orga, an organization that is not accustomed to paying taxes and now have this additional fee? I, I mean, what's the, what, like, it might just be.
No, you're not, no. So, so I think that, I, I think the first thing is that there's a, there's a difference, we all know this, right? There's a difference between a fee and a tax, right? Um, and I think that one of the key things is that we wanna make sure that as many stakeholders as possible are educated about the fact that it is a fee. You would receive credits, provided the charity will make sure that their, the conditions on your property itself, um, are maintained, and don't contribute more into.
So, so the property owner has the opportunity to mitigate.
They can mitigate, exactly. They can mitigate the contributions, less than pervertious surface, or any type of, or any type of, any green infrastructure, or gray infrastructure that they do within their property itself, it encourages them to take those steps and.
Okay. They talk about it as a user fee, and primarily that is because if you're lowering your, lessening your usage of the stormwater system by, you know, having rain barrels or whatever else, you would receive credit and thereby reduce your fee.
Okay.
And I, I would also note that, uh, all of these businesses or homes or churches or whatever you're wanting to talk about, they're, they're already paying fees, right? They're already paying sewer fees and water fees and.
Right, and yeah, but they're paying fees for stuff that they're
Using.
Using, consuming.
Well, this is.
This is a fee for something they're pushing out, in essence. It's, it's a little bit backwards in that sense, so I think that part, I just don't know that.
Well, they're using the system because everything's draining off their parking lot into our storm drains, and then, you know, off into wherever else.
Well, I think, I think there's a, there's definite education opportunity there.
Absolutely.
Definitely, they're not gonna see it as.
And, and the other thing is that I also wanna highlight, it's like, one of the things that, uh, we had mentioned is the risk of doing nothing, right?
Right.
The risk of doing nothing, making sure that we're able to maintain strong business development, making sure that, um, other things within a community aren't disruptive, or like the least disruption as possible, to make sure that towns like Lambertville are able to continue to flourish, right? And, you know, the, the value in having a stormwater utility, and implementing a stormwater utility, um, presents opportunities to be able to, to, to make sure that there aren't, there, that least currents as possible, well, to be able to address it. Um, and I think that that's one of the, one of the keys, it's like, if, if nothing is done at all, then, you know, we just have to deal with it, but, um, there are opportunities to be able to deal with it.
But you're right, it is a topic that will need to be discussed and educated folks, and, um, you know, myself and James's organization are, you know, there to help provide that sort of education.
Thanks, I'm gonna, uh, come up there, one more, and then we're gonna move on.
The, the, um, input from your, or from New Jersey Future, bust, New Jersey Future. So the input from your organization is, is that, and to pay for that outreach, is that included in the, in the grant that we will get? Or is this above the grant?
This will be separate from the grant, and so one of the things that we work, do is we work with, um, both, uh, community stakeholders, um, as well as, uh, public stakeholders as well, to make sure that folks are educated. Uh, so there's a whole, a lot of different strategies that we can implement to be able to do that.
So you're saying that to do that, though, there's a fee?
No, there's no fee.
No fee?
No fee, no, no, there is no fee.
So the grant for the 30, the grant you spoke about, $30,000, we would not have to get that grant to use.
You can apply for that grant, which would help with the fees, would, would help with the cost of the feasibility study. So there's the, there's the, the assistance.
Just as a part of the outreach, the outreach is free.
The outreach is separate, yeah.
Right. So he's, the grant, the $30,000 grant, is separate from the DEP grant.
Yeah.
Which if you don't get the DEP grant, you would go talk to James for the $30,000 grant for the feasibility study. Otherwise, all of that educational stuff, we will happy to help you without, you know, for bringing.
Yeah, I was just.
Sorry, I hope that's clear.
I didn't know where it's at.
Yeah, with the line ones, good.
Thank you.
All right, thank you both for coming and introducing. Not gonna do a public comment on this, uh, this is really just an introduction, happy to speak to any members of the public about this later on, um, so I wanna continue moving the meeting along, but thank you so much for coming tonight, we really appreciate it, hope you have a safe drive home, and I know we'll be, we'll be talking.
No problem.
See you in November.
Watch the clothes.
Yeah. Yeah. All right, uh, moving on. Uh, we have one amendment to make to the August eighteen, twenty twenty two minutes. Uh, just contacted by Mr. John Hencheck and asked to amend the statement at the August eighteenth minute, uh, in August eighteen minutes. So, uh, amending Mr. Hencheck's statement to strike the following from the minutes. I have the highest concentration of arsenic in my well in the state of New Jersey. Um, there was confusion about whether Mr. Hencheck actually said that. So, uh, I've asked him just to clarify and he, uh, does, uh. Does not remember saying that or was not written down correctly. So we have, uh, I have, I've taken that into consideration and hoping that the council will, uh. Probably make a motion to, uh, to accordingly swipe the statement for the minutes.
Motion? Do you need a motion?
Unless we want to talk about this.
Do you need a motion?
I do need a motion.
Don't move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
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 Please don't hold out.
All right, motion carries. Um, moving on, appointments, supporters and commissions. I would note that, um, we still have some, uh, openings in the library for terms aspiring to twenty twenty three and twenty twenty five. Um, I do thank Councilwoman, Councilwoman Lambert, uh, who has been working diligently to fill our spaces, uh, contact people whose terms are coming up on our boards and commissions. Uh, committees. So, uh, we will have some movement on these things in the next month or two, and thank you for your work on that. Um, uh, moving on to discussion items, uh, the cost of property, just as a reminder, the R F E I is currently out for the farm market. Questions regarding the R F E I must be submitted to Cindy Diggie and Bill Opel by four o'clock on October twenty first. Uh, responses will be posted on city website by October twenty fifth. Uh, if anyone wishes to visit the cost inside of the, the farm market site, they may do so, uh, by appointment. You can make it a appointment with Cindy or myself. And submissions for the R F E I must be submitted by November fourth at four P M. That is the, that is the time. Yes.
If, uh, if we find that we haven't gotten enough of the, enough proposals, will we put it out again?
I don't know. Um, we'll have to decide that then.
It's possible.
I'm not adverse to it. I, I, yeah.
Okay.
Um. Uh, Valley Parking, next. Uh, so this, um, city, uh, was planning up to put together a memo. I'm just gonna run through this a little bit. Um, so there has been, uh, a question about whether the city would consider, uh, a Valley Parking Service, uh, in front of Under the Moon. Uh, here in the city, um, and I've had some conversations with Eric, who owns the restaurant. And I'm just gonna run through a couple of things here, um, from my conversation with Eric. So they would, Under the Moon would offer to keep the valet stand on their property. Um, and oversee the program and pay for the meters during the times that valet services offered. They would not be, the valet service would not be only for customers of Under the Moon. And in fact, they would have no, uh. They would get no financial recompense for this service. They just see it as a service that would be valuable to their customers and to the city. So Under the Moon is proposing to have the valet stand, uh, inside their, inside their fence to manage the valets on site. To pay for the two parking spaces that would be required for cars to pull in and, uh, and, and be valet parked. There would be a staff of three valets. Um, the valets would, would drive, uh, the cars from Under the Moon to Bridge Street, right on Bridge Street. And they would park in the station parking lot where I think fifty spaces have been, uh, designated for valet parking.
Can accommodate up to seventy five spaces. I don't know how they do that, but.
Yeah.
Should be interesting.
So, uh, once they, uh, once cars leave, once valets would, uh, return the cars, they would pick them up at the station. Drive down Lambert Lane, turn right on Corial, turn right on North Union and return them to the same valet drop off pickup area. Uh, we have just a flat fee of twenty dollars, uh, for whoever wants to take advantage of the, of the parking situation. I think that's the, those are the major, uh, talked to Lieutenant Brown certainly, uh, and, um. We could put signage up on the meters. Lieutenant Brown has indicated that if we wanted to enforce, uh, we wouldn't, we would enforce those, those, those rules. And ticket any cars that did park there during the meter hour, during the valley hours, that would be fine. So those are the salient points. Um.
Mary, just a clarifying question. I think you said something about there's a twenty dollar fee and that there is no, so the fee doesn't go to the restaurant?
It doesn't.
Okay.
It doesn't go to the valley company?
It was a vendor.
Yeah, so there's a separate valley, uh, company. Uh, and I would just also note that the last thing, uh, is that. Under the moon, so that they'd be happy to do a trial period. And if we don't, if we don't, if we think it's bad, there's too much. Uh, whatever comes up that they would just stop the program.
And are there specific hours that have been scheduled? Is this only Friday, Saturday night?
It is. I forgot what it was Friday evenings. Cindy, do you have the, um?
What's it get the very?
Sorry.
I'm sorry, just, uh, are there the hours? I don't remember them offhand.
I guess they never seen them.
That they were.
They were in his, um, in the.
Yeah, it was Friday evenings, um, I think five to nine. I think it was all day Saturdays and I think it was Sunday evenings, or Sunday all day. Friday evening, all day Saturday, all day Sunday. They would pay for the meters for the, during those period.
My suggestion, um, is that this is, can we get a detailed description of what they plan on doing? How they plan on doing it? Cause there, uh, if you had a conversation with them, then I think is great. But I, I, I don't think that there's enough information provided from the new vendor. Who is not the restaurant, who's, who's a separate entity, is going to, uh, be hired by. The, by the restaurant to do valet parking. So I would like to get more information about the contract or the proposed contract for the station. Um, and, and just how they plan on running this.
The, the, I don't disagree with that. So I think that's a probably good idea that if, if I were the. Property behind that as you're pulling up, which is the church. I would wanna, so I'm, I'm thinking about like, on Saturdays in the winter time. You know, they have kids basketball every hour from seven till three or whatever.
Right.
Um, I don't know how this affected, there's a lot of cars coming in there that, that those times is the game time of the hour. So, um, I guess I'd want to like, get some input maybe from the church folks. I mean, it could be anybody with it. The property right behind it or two properties, whatever, might be most affected by this. Cause if there's more than two cars, if there's five cars lined up.
So, yeah. I would just point out that, uh, if I may, uh, Councilwoman, that the space directly to the north of the two valet spots we're talking about is a handicap spot. And then all of the space in front of the church is open. There's no parking there. So. If you think traditionally, and there's been, there, there was no parking there. So the people, parishioners already left there. So there is, there, there is place, you know, there. You know, there's a, a sizable length in front of the church where drop offs can be made, I, I think regardless. So I'm just, I would just.
You mean church drop offs?
Church drop offs or basketball drop offs or whatever, right?
Do you have the hours?
Okay.
Friday night from five P M. On Saturday all day, Sunday A M. Through five P M.
What time?
He doesn't say. He just says A M.
I think it says, I think it was, I think it was from the meter time.
Okay, so, so that would be one to, one to five on Sunday.
One to five.
Uh, what, now what is Sunday?
It's when the meters, during the meter time.
Sunday would be from one to five. So do we need to be concerned about the traffic on Lambert Lane with respect to a possible cannabis retailer in the back there?
Well, we're talking about only having three valets, uh, in total. So, you know, at its busiest moment, you've got the three cars on Lambert Lane.
Not all of it, no.
Well, well, let's just say.
One, two, three.
Right. I mean, you might have three cars on Lambert Lane at the same time. But, uh, it's on there.
The, uh.
Are they gonna get, um, under the moon to, are they gonna go on foot?
Yeah.
Under the moon to go on it.
To, to get the car, I'd have to go walk down to the station.
There'll be public comment.
Not for this. There's a book, public comment at the end of the meeting.
For anything at the end.
At the end of the meeting, yes.
At the end of the meeting.
Right.
Yeah.
The, um. I, I am open minded. I don't think we have enough information on one piece or two pieces in front of us. To be able to ask questions, well, to be able to get answers, not ask questions, we can ask questions while we want. Um, I, I can share with you that when the city proposed a loading zone. For the former owner of the property, the church, uh, pushed back very hard on the city. Um, not to do that. Um, because in their minds, it affected their parishioners about losing a space.
And I, and I can second that by parishioners, by, by having the parklet, parklets on North Union Street. Parishioners were not happy about that, because of the loss of parking space.
Yeah. So I think, I think that conversation has to be addressed about, you know, the, 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 the loss of. To, it's loss of two spaces, right? Or the reassignment of.
The reassignment. Yes, right.
It's also lost because it's still there.
Well, and they're also being paid for.
Well, money cannot always, uh, influence my decision there. It's the effect on the other business community that's there now and, and.
Two spaces for a church that doesn't have parking, like I get it, but this is a much bigger decision than two, two spots for parishioners. I think, I think it's an important, but kind of red hair.
Yeah, I'm not so worried about the, losing the two spot. I always worry about losing spots, but if they're gonna be relocating people that otherwise would be parking up the street. It's probably a net gain for the people in the, you know, like the church. If there's some church activity. Maybe somebody, you dropping the kids off for roller skating on Friday night, operating, you know, maybe you want, maybe you want a valet. I don't know. Um, but, um, I guess my point is that I, I would suggest that to the extent that we all have questions. Um, we would benefit from trying to air those out and just get a sense of what the answer to those questions are. And maybe, you know, um, I, I, under respect for the businesses, I want them to thrive. Um, and, you know, they're requesting this and what they came forward and shared this. If there are questions like this, we should try to get them answered before we make the decision. Um, cause this is all kind of mostly knowable stuff. So.
Well, that's fine. In my conversation with Eric, I told him that, you know, it was quite possible we wouldn't have a decision tonight and was fine with that. So what I would propose in the interest of, uh, time this evening is every council member would commit to writing down his or her questions and forwarding them to me in the next five days.
That's right.
I will give the answers and we'll retake, we'll take this backup. I'll have a, all the summary for you of his answers by the next council meeting. And depending on how heavy the agenda is, we, uh, we may take it up at the next meeting or we may wait till early November.
I think it would be helpful at the, here.
I'm sure you'd be happy to come.
Absolutely. Because they're gonna be so.
Absolutely. So in the meantime, uh, I will ask everyone, whoever has questions, let's say, uh, deadline by next Wednesday. Could you give me some questions? That way I can organize them into, uh, some format and then get them on to Eric and then we'll get those back to you and then, uh, public. That sound good? Good? Any other questions on that matter? Okay. Uh, the next, uh, item is sidewalks ban trip hazards. This is not, uh, this does not have specifically to do with the ordinance that we're going to be, uh, have our second reading and public hearing on in October. This is, I think, specifically more around something of the Councilman, Councilman Sanders brought up. There are a number of, uh, small spiky fences around, uh, that, uh, you know, someone tripped and fell and you could seriously injure yourself. So we just wanted to bring that out to the public.
Imagine a fence this high.
I, I remember the sharp one. I imagine you on the point.
No, I don't want to imagine that.
No, because it happened. It happened to work.
Yeah.
It is, yeah, yeah.
So, well, wouldn't that? Well, yeah, we'll discuss it.
Well, I don't know if it is to discuss other than to point it out and to say that we're gonna be writing letters and asking people to take them down.
Are we saying no fences or no fences that are pointing?
No fences that are, that are safety hazards, right? Short ones.
So, well, that's, that's.
How short?
So then people are gonna say that you keep all the dogs out of my yard.
Except a lot of these are like around the tree that right where you park and then you've got the tree and you've got that to open your car door. It's dark. You fall over.
I, I think reasonable common sense, uh, applies here.
So you want round, you don't want spikes, you want round your car?
Doesn't, that, we don't get to legislate by common sense.
Well, we're asking, we're not requiring. We haven't, we're not drafting ordinance for this. We just wanted to bring it to the public's attention. Um, because sometimes decorative things are dangerous.
Well. Always that one. So I, do, do homeowners know that if someone trips a pole and this offense that they put up on their property, they are liable?
Well, I, I, you know, the, the money doesn't matter to me so much as the individual's health.
Exactly.
Right, yeah. So.
No, but it, but there's always money attached to an accident on the sidewalk. It is not possible. We've, the city's been sued many times. So.
But we don't own the sidewalk. So you typically, I, I think since two thousand and nine, they've never won a lawsuit against the city. We can't speak further to that, but.
So anyway, everybody out there, if you have a pointy fence and you feel like it might be a danger, we're gonna write you a nice letter and, uh, ask you to reconsider taking that fence down. That's the point of that. We don't want anybody getting hurt.
So is there a height limit?
There's no height limit.
So how does someone, well, he, well, here's, here's the thing. I mean, there are historic fences around old houses and they're pointy. And they're tall or they're short. I mean, there has to be a trip, if it's a trip hazard, I would imagine that we should take an inventory of the fences. And set some standard up.
Are you volunteering?
No, no, cause I'm not, I'm making no friends with fences, so.
It's my understanding that it's fences that are in the right of way and fences that are in the walkway. Not, not your fences that, um, fence off the front of your property, like, you know, I think Delaware Avenue has. You know, a, a very nice, a healthy setback. So it wouldn't be if anybody had a fence there, but it's things that are in the right of way. Between the sidewalk and the street.
That will strip them grass.
It does, that seems to be the area that is the ma- major concern and where we've heard, um, people have been injured.
And. Are people tripping over sidewalk signs too?
Signs, not.
Sandwich boards?
Uh, I haven't had complaints about them lately. And if there are, if people are putting up sandwich boards, we certainly should let Ken know, the zoning officer.
Ken knows very well.
I, I haven't had.
Oh, not about, not about, uh, uh, urinal injuries. I'm, I'm sure that we would all know. So we're talking about the little fences around the tree, basically. Is that it?
I think that's what we're talking about. All right. And now we're not gonna talk about it anymore. So we're just gonna send nice letters out, request, uh, people to, to, to remove them. Or at least point out that they could be. Um, the next item is the post setback ordinance. I know the conference, uh, segment is working on this, um, but we necessarily need to talk about it at the moment. But, uh, just to let everybody know that we are sort of looking at some setback, uh, changes to the zoning ordinance with respect to fences, porches, that kind of thing. So, uh, we've, we've got some language that we've taken a look at, uh, we'll circulate that or continue to circulate that around to the council. And to the zoning board and to the construction office for further comments. But at some point, uh, that will become a more official point of, uh, conversation.
And please, the, there is no ways. A resident, a citizen, a resident, a property owner can always ask for relief from anything we put in to an ordinance. And, um, it could be granted. So that, that's another. Uh, educational thing we need to do with the boards of, of why we're making decisions. That may seem to some stricter than the ones before or different from the ones before, but it doesn't stop a citizen from coming up and. Say, to one of the boards and asking for relief. So, uh, I think it's an educational, once we do this, it's, I think that we will definitely plan and more to be involved. When, when we do something, uh, but I think if there's been some relief given in the past, I'm like, that, that, uh. Maybe given in the future. I just want to be, it's educational as well as, uh, uh, what's good for the city and the property owner.
Uh, next, just an announcement that Safe, uh, has sent us some force comments, just reminding everybody that October is the next. Next, just an announcement that Safe has sent us some force comments, just reminding everybody that October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. We had a newsletter about this today. You know, Safe and Hundredton is a, it's an important organization. Dispatches are made to local police and handled in a very specific way, so there are lots of resources for victims of domestic abuse. Website, savehundredton.org, they have a Facebook page and Instagram page and a LinkedIn page, so we would encourage the public to take a look at that, those pages and be familiar with them. Lastly, in terms of the discussion, I just wanted to give everybody a quick update on the construction projects here in the city. First of all, the library porch contract has been signed and I expect that construction on that will begin soon. Very pleased that that's underway or will soon be underway. Earl Construction, the the road, the FEMA road projects will be getting on. Next Monday, the seventeenth, all of that work is scheduled to be done by Thanksgiving, they're starting off with storm basins and then they'll move into. Repairing curbs, I guess, they'll finish up the road work. So the city has a a proposed schedule for all those items, did we put it on the website?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, I will put it on the website, it is subject to change depending on weather, but really, we're looking at a period of about six weeks till August. Six, five to six weeks to get all this road work done, so that's exciting. Kyle Conti, the contractor who's working in the creeks is hard at work, they started last week, they've been putting debris out of the creeks like mad. Doing a great job, they've already started doing some stream grading down between. Just out here, between the canal and South Union Street, it will be all around the city for the next couple of months. During different, different parts of the of the creek where both in the Swan Creek and Ely Creek up at New York Street. So we we, I I have almost all the access agreements I need, I still need one key access agreement for equipment to get into Swan Creek. Which has been a little bit of a challenge, so I'm working on that, but residents have been very pleased and. Excited that the work is being done and spending a lot of time with people talking about it. So the crew is out every day and they're super nice guys, Chris and Matt, so public are encouraged to speak with them, certainly to speak to me at any time to the question. The 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 last project, the the joint project with West Amwell, the date for that is not set yet for for construction. We've started, we had a pre-construction meeting, I expect that we'll have a schedule for that work fairly soon. And just lastly, I would, I would say DOT has initiated a project kind of coinc- coinc- concurrent with our work. On the South Main Street Bridge, I I found out last week that the DOT is doing a major structural repair to that bridge. They are starting it also on October seventeenth and that's gonna take several months and our. Kyle Conti guys will be passing under the bridge with skid steers while the DOT is working under the bridge. You know, creating new structures and supporting it, so it's gonna be a lot of teamwork. Yeah, so, so I'm looking forward to that as well, so that's an update on the on the construction projects in the city. Any questions about that from the council?
Okay. Want to just note that they worked even in the recording room.
Yeah, they worked all week long in the rain, I wrote about it, I mean, these guys were amazing, they they were in Swan Creek when the creek was super high. Pulling up this giant tree and timed your roads and lifting it twenty-five feet over the bridges, they're really. They're, they're, they're great, they're impressive, I I'm very pleased with them. Alright, so we do have one ordinance to introduce tonight, it's ordinance number twenty-eight dash twenty-two, this is an ordinance to amend the Lambeauville City Code. Two thousand fourteen, chapter three, section three, three through seventeen, the Human Rights Council. So I'd like to recognize Councilwoman Lambert for all her contributions with the Human Rights Council. And she worked closely with the council to make some recommended changes here for ordinance and I don't know if you want to take a minute or two to just. Give us the the key points of these these proposed changes for the ordinance.
Sure, a year ago, just over a year ago, council approved some changes to the same ordinance where we. We included a non-resident. Well, we 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 allowed for for non-resident to be appointed to Human Rights Council and added a student. From the South Hunterton Regional School District. In first, in in discussion this year. When I talked to the Chair Ronnie Todd Moreno. We recognized that we probably want to have a specific number of. Specific number of, you know, we wanted to to stipulate that there could only be one non-resident, otherwise we potentially could end up with. More non-residents than residents on the council, so that was a discussion that we agreed upon. So that's one change that's going in here, the other thing that we talked about, Ronnie and I. Was that. It is probably a good idea to have that non-resident reappointed annually because as a non-resident. They could drift off to other places and we we sort of would like to know where they are and, you know. Not have them have an extended term, nor did we feel it was appropriate. To have a non-resident serve longer than, you know, potentially longer than any resident that's on on the HRC. So those two changes are reflected in this language. The other thing is that. We do have a, we do have a stipulation for a single student. Due to, well, we didn't really have a process in place for selecting students and we had two applicants and we ended up with two students. And that's great, but what they've been working on with us is helping to identify a process for how we get to. Get through an application and selection process so that we will have one student moving forward. And the biggest roadblock, and I think this actually may have come up, was. What will be the term that these students serve, will it be a calendar year like everyone else or the academic year? And I made an executive decision that will be. The academic year and after talking to the students and recognizing that they, you know, it makes more sense with their.
She says a twelve-month period beginning of the academic.
Yes, so that was not part of the original.
But you're saying it's not, they're not serving just the academic year, they're just starting at the academic.
They're starting at the academic year, that is correct, that's right, so September through August roughly, right? So the other thing I've worked out is. We set up a timeline for application submissions, interviews and. Selection of a candidate and I'll be working with Ronnie to get that piece implemented. So are there any questions from my fellow council members?
Only one thing that I didn't notice until just now is where we have the the one, two, three, four, five list. Everybody except for the student has their term called out there, it is called out above, but we probably want it to be in system.
Okay, so Cindy, can you add that number six?
Oh, no, the students there, it's just the.
Oh, one-year term. I'm sorry, okay, for a one-year term.
Are there questions from the council?
Yes, I I remember when we entertained. Having a non-resident on there. There was a back and forth, but you know, it seems to be working. But my concern is, is that should a non-resident of the city have voting privileges? Because the decisions that are being made in the city affect the residents of the city. So I would be much more comfortable since we're amending is is to have that particular position, a non-voting position.
My only thought on that, Councilman, was that, you know, unless I'm mistaken, a a non-resident was considered because some of the scope of the Human. Rights Council may be more regional or have a have a broader appeal that just kind of within the city limits, right? So that was, I don't know if anybody has a different memory of kind of why that, why that non-member was initially put in, but. But my impression was that it was potentially to consider issues that were more regional in nature than just within the scope of Lambeauville. When we talk about human rights issues, there, you know, there's not, there's not necessarily a municipal line for those, so that was. It's a, it's. One of Charlie's votes, you all take it, but it's a, it's likely advisory party.
It is, it is, the only thing I've been serving just this year, really only since February or March, and the only thing we've ever voted on has been minutes. Council President, you were on prior to that, you have probably some more experience.
No, I mean, that's true, they, I think they vote on things occasionally, but really it's just a point of process to how they run the meeting, I don't think the votes are. I don't have an issue with it, let's put it that way.
Yeah, something came up recently where there was, there was a discussion about presenting a topic and moving it forward. And one member of the council wanted to push for a vote to to move it forward and. We didn't at the time for some other reasons, but, you know, that comes to mind as something. It was about presenting a program in the community. And kind of how to approach presenting it, you know, moving it forward. So that particular program would have been. Conducted within the community, held within the community, but certainly anyone who heard about it, which is all of our, you know, all of the HRC. Activities are open to anybody who wants to come. You know. I I don't know, I mean, I'm I'm kind of on the fence about the the voting privilege, the. I will, I will point out that the two, the student does not vote mostly because the student is a minor, so they're not, it's a non-voting position. But I don't know.
I I don't have a concern with allowing them to vote with their love. To me, it's not, I don't have a concern. I I would, just one clarification, because the students. Could be from West Amwell or Stockton, do we wanna, is there a residency requirement?
They have to be a South Hunterton Regional School District.
But I understand it to be a south student, but can they be from West Amwell, a non-resident?
Well, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Well, it could be, it could be from anywhere.
That's true, they take tuition students, right, at South Hunterton?
I don't have a concern, I was just sort of curious about the question. Yeah, I mean, I would just suggest again that, you know, a lot of the things that Human Rights Council is dealing with are larger issues and we've got a representative from the district. You know, that feels like, you know, there might be district issues that come up. For the council, right? Maybe issues with the school that that the council want to address and in that case, it wouldn't matter where the student was from because the student's a student of the district.
Right, and and I think the student position, I mean, not to derail the. The point they made, but, you know, the students are are really. Tending to act as as something of a liaison between Human Rights Council and within the school. You know, within the school itself and the high school and, you know, the assumption is that they are high school students as opposed to elementary. You know, as a kind of a ridiculous example, but, you know, that is the assumption, so.
Do you want to put it in here, high school student?
Should we do that? Do we need to? Will we get a?
Well, they ought to be appointed, so we could just.
Right, I mean, we can always make that decision.
Anybody who wants to go to the meetings and participate can do so, so.
Right, right.
Yeah.
If we mean high school student, we should say high school student. Okay.
I don't think that we should, I I would not be in favor of saying high school student, I I think there are a lot of eighth graders who are really engaged. And I would welcome, I'd rather have a, you know, an engaged eighth grader than a lazy, lazy eleven grader.
Anybody who decides they're gonna decide one day this is like.
That's right.
I think we may be overthinking this a little bit.
I'm certainly over talking here.
Follow-up, follow-up question. I'm just. It'll, it'll, it'll happen, I don't want, I don't want today, so.
That's right, going twice.
You should do.
Moving on.
The. I'm I'm concerned, and I'm still concerned, that there's no geographic limitation to an outside. To a resident, to a non-resident.
That's why they can be, it's a only one-year term, so somebody moves to California from Stockton.
Right. Yeah, that's, that's kind of how, right, that's kind of how we said, like, okay, you want to move to Stockton, but. You know, and I think it's still incumbent on the governing body to say like, oh, there's somebody from Illinois that would like to be on our Human Rights Council. We might not appoint them, but again, we do it annually, right, it's done annually.
I guess that's the concession. That it's gonna.
Yeah, I think that's kind of how we keep it, but we still have to vote on it, so none of this happens without our vote.
Right.
None of these appointments. So we can, we have the option to say, no, that candidate is not the right candidate, for whichever reason.
I I mean, you know, my feeling is if if the council wanted to put. A voting limitation on it, I I I'm good, if you don't, you know, that's, it's not a hill I'm gonna die on, you know what I mean, so.
I only have a feeling about it because once you remove the student, once you remove the resident, you only have three voting members, right, so I I just don't, I I don't see it really as an issue.
But of all the, all the boards, committees, and commissions we can talk about to like strip somebody of their voting.
And just franchising.
Well.
You know, actually, you bring up, excuse me, you bring up a good point.
I would love to have a student though, quite honestly, but anyway, that's a different conversation. I I mean, I, is there a legal reason why a student wouldn't be allowed to vote on a, on a, on an advisory board? I would love to see the student be able to vote, I mean, why else would they there?
If he filled his way in.
Did he?
Yeah, if the student's under eighteen.
Under eighteen. If they're an eighteen-year-old senior and then they can vote.
Right.
That could be a rabbit hole for another day.
Oh, I was gonna talk about the membership, because the mayor just said we'd be down to three members. You know. I think we need to. So I think what we're saying is that the non-resident council is one of the. Five members.
That's a tiebreaker.
We don't have five members listed, five private sector members listed. I'll work that out with you. Do we? Well, the student was never really part of the five members.
Well, they are now in this.
Okay, so they are now.
The way it's written, anyway, they are.
Yeah.
But they're not voting.
It doesn't say in here that they're not voting, no, it doesn't say that, it's an issue of age, so it's not by nature of their studentness that they can't vote, it's whether they're under eighteen.
How does that affect voting, I know they're, I don't want to hit this for an hour and a half, but.
But go right ahead.
How does it influence them? And they're an advisor. So it's an advisory board, so.
Yeah, and and actually, there are a total of eleven members, right? So there are six public sector and five private sector members, so.
I say we vote on this with the one-year term added to the number five for the student, so it's, okay, clear, okay.
Alright.
Oh, yes, motion to approve as of this.
Alright, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
Aye.
Are you opposed?
No, because you didn't wait, I was waiting to say yes.
Oh, okay.
And you jumped into.
Maybe I thought Eric, sorry. Alright, ordinance currently draft form.
Not we.
I'm not going to, I was just gonna skip over them. I know, these are noted in the minutes and I mean, actually in the agenda, I don't think I'm required to read them, so take a look at them. Everybody and know that they're, we're working hard, we're doing a lot of ordinance writing here in Lambeauville and stay tuned for the fun of ordinances in the future. And at this time, I'd like to open the meeting up to public participation, are there any members of the public that wish to speak? I would just know. I would just note that, uh, we have rules of conduct here that are, uh, not only, um, customary, but they're also, uh, ordinances, uh, you have three minutes to speak, we ask you to name, we ask you to identify yourself by name, address, keep your mark civil, et cetera. So if there's any member of the public that wishes to speak on any, uh, items this evening, please step up to the mic.
That one?
Yes, please. Uh, it's not on, but can you just speak?
I think I can reach you. At least it gets four rating points. Um, so I just wanna comment, uh, first I'll say thanks for what you're doing to the mayor, to the council. This is related to ballet parking, so I live right across the street from the hawk who has started doing ballet parking. I'm not sure that they came here and talked about it. So it's gotten, it's intense there. So the cross, the ways that the streets are, it's very busy and it's causing some more traffic and stuff, and I really do think you should, you should approach this in a wary way. The whole issue of ballet parking because it's traffic. More people gathered in one spot. In the case of the hawk, they're putting some cones around. Yeah, there's some stuff going on and I don't wanna, I, I, I don't wanna just discourage this, but I do think it should be really deliberate. And, um, consider not only the commercial aspects of the residents that live nearby and the traffic, and I think there's crosswalks, actually, where you're talking about, the moon is. I mean, there's definitely crosswalks there, so in terms of volume, density, effect, and then other restaurants we want it, and then another restaurant. You know, you've got kids like they're trying to make a buck and they're zipping around, you know, they're going wherever they're going, so just think it should be more of a cautious, somewhat of a cautious approach to allowing ballet parking. So the hawk thing we could talk about, I don't wanna disrupt the business practice, but, um, yeah, I just, I think that needs to be cautious.
Okay. Yeah, I would say thank you for letting us know about the hawk because, uh, you know, I haven't actually walked down there where they've done their ballet and they didn't approach the city in any structured way.
Yeah.
And if they're putting cones out, that's an issue, so we will look into that. I'm happy that you brought it to my attention or to our attention. Obviously, we wanna make sure that, uh, not only are the businesses able to function well, that traffic moves, uh, through our neighborhoods accordingly, but that the residents are not, uh, incommode.
Yeah, and I just, yeah, it's still the awareness factor is really huge.
Yeah.
And so I'm happy to talk about it and I don't wanna alienate. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else, uh, in the room? Is there anyone online? How many members of the public we have online? Five, okay, you'll know that for a minute, please. Alright, uh, I would entertain a motion to close the public conference. Thank you, councilman, is there a second from the council president? All of us in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Alright, I believe at this point, I'd be happy to, uh, to, uh, have a motion to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor? Thank you very much, everybody for coming tonight. Thank you to the wonderful council and our incredible people down at the end of the dais. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Now, back to our ordinance writing.
That was the question, I was trying, I didn't ask articulately, but that's the question I was thinking about.
How are they gonna get to the station?
Well.
Well, no, you got from the station on Lambert.